Let's call our meeting to order and rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's great to see everybody today. We've got a lot of stuff on our plate today, so we will get started. First off, I will turn it over to Tony to talk about 1782.
Okay. Before we do that, I would like for us to talk a little bit about an award that one of us received here recently. The Cambridge City New Day Quanis Club annually has a Cambridge City Citizen of the Year Award, and they graciously invited us and the commissioners to attend last night, and we found out that the Cambridge City Citizen of the Year is our own Beth Leisure. So, we thank the Quanis for inviting us to that dinner. In the budget process, the state reviews our budget. They issue us a 1782 form. We received the information, and the DLGF reviewed our budget, issued revisions and reductions in the 2024 budget, gave us a notice, and one thing that we need to do to finalize things is we need to reduce the budget. We talked about in council budget, there's a line item for projects. The last several years, that number has been $3 million. We decided that we only need to spend a million and a half, but we left the $3 million in there. I've got, Ron has drafted a resolution number 2023-07 that we can reduce that particular line item, and our 1782 form will then be approved. Are there any questions to that form? Ron, do you want to?
Just so there's no confusion, you have two different prototypes, each labeled as 2023-07. So, one involves the second option of reducing your unexpendated, unencumbered appropriations in 2023 budget to increase the appropriation capacity in 2024. The other is, as you just described, with reducing the general fund, 2024 budget in response to the 1782, and then filing that as your response to that 1782.
The easiest thing, and my recommendation would be to reduce that particular line item, and we'll be in good shape. So, I would make the motion that you all have before you, that we approve resolution number 2023-07.
There's some blanks that need to be filled in. I think the auditor will have to assist in doing that.
And the amount that you're recommending is just?
One point five million. That particular line item.
That's it. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, Mr. Fulcher.
Currently, we have a grant. I think it's going to be discussed later on, if you would rather wait or conclude that now.
It's later on on the agenda we can talk about.
Okay. I'm asking council to move $69,000 from the general fund to grant number, it's for the EMA. It's a matching fund that's required under the contract. We have with the federal government all that grant. I'm asking for $69,000 for the matching fund being transferred from the county general to that fund.
I think this is the, this is the request that Kathy and I have had quite a bit of conversation about. She's tried to explain it to me to better understand what the ask is. I think the question still remains, we need to transfer that money when it's appropriated in the general fund. In my thinking, it still qualifies as a match. Why would it need to be transferred to another fund?
You asked me.
I'm asking you as the auditor.
As this auditor, I've determined we're going to set up grants, give each of them a fund number so we can track them, trying to avoid the problems we've had with old grants in the county. Matching funds for this grant are less than they were last year, so I think it's imperative to me to be able to separate these grants so I can track them. It's easier we're using in my office to try to avoid what Kathy went through in my evening in the office, looking at grants that were eight, nine, 10 years old and trying to straighten them out.
Could you not demonstrate from the county's perspective that the match was met by the expenditures out of the general fund for those particular?
This is a much better and cleaner way for me to keep books and track of grants. It's simpler. It's the way it ought to be done. It's the way I want to do it.
Could I ask a question here, Mark? I want to make sure I understand, because I haven't asked, I don't remember if I actually talked to you about that or just talked to you. So, on that grant, is that one that works similar to the VOKA grant? So, Matthew's going to pay employees out of that grant? Okay. So, what we do with VOKA, because that's also a matching grant, we have, we created the grant, and then we pay out of that grant up to whatever the grant amount is. And then, when we hit that magic number, it reverts to the general fund for the rest of that payroll, rather than moving the match into that fund.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I talked, I remember too, but when that grant, when we exceed, or we get to the point of that grant, when that grant is no longer available to us, the money, then whatever council wants to do with those employees would go back to the county general fund, if that's what you determine to do with those employees. Because as it stands now, with the matching fund as less than what it was last year, you don't have enough money in that fund to pay the employees out of that fund. So, you have a choice, either let the employees go, or the county can pick them up and make, finish out the?
I think that in clarification and for the employees that are impacted by those grants, that's not a true statement. Their salary and benefits are appropriated in the general fund, and if the state told us this year, we're not giving you any money in the reimbursement, those employees are still employees of the county, they're still full-time employees, and they will continue being employees.
That's up to you.
It's already done. It's in the 24 budget.
Okay, well, that's fine. But I'm just saying, that's not my choice. That's yours.
Correct. So, if it's similar to the VOKA grant, and that's how the VOKA grant is processed, then I would not see why we would change this for EMA, and then have two processes for the same scenario.
I want to repeat that, because I see Matthew sitting here and make sure that we're, and Mark are all on the same page. So, whatever that grant amount is, is in the fund, the new fund number for that grant, and then the payroll clerk pays those people out of that until she hits whatever zero is. So, if it's, I'll just say 50,000, then when she hits 50,000, those employees' payroll revert to that line in Matthew's, I don't know where, you know, the EMA fund, and then they're paid out of there for the rest of the year.
That's correct.
Okay.
What I'm doing is, I want to separate that grant, give it a fund number, which we already have, and keep track of the grant separately, as some of the state board of council regulations require me to do. Trying to avoid mixing grants with county general, I think that's a bad idea. I think the way I want to do it is the way it ought, from my perspective, it needs to be done. We have assigned a grant or a fund number to that grant already, so it's just a matter of getting money into the grant. We have a current balance now in it, and I'm asking that, by the contract, we have 69,000 and some change put into that grant so we can pay for it.
And I think really, Mark, it's just a matter of bookkeeping, whether we move the money and put it in that grant, or leave it in the general fund, and you take it out of there. It's just kind of, right?
I understand what you're saying.
I'm just asking, is that, that's a question?
I want it separated. We're in the process of separating all the grants. We're in the process of not just reimbursables. We are trying to figure out which ones are reimbursable and which are not, and we're starting, going through all of them. Some of them we can't find, some of them we're still looking for, some of them we're going back to office holders. These aren't my grants. They're the office holders' grant. We're monitoring how the money's spent, whatever the rules are in that grant, that's what we're trying to monitor.
And I agree, it would be cleaner with a separate fund number.
Correct.
So that you can do what you just said, but moving the matching part is kind of?
Well, we don't know how many we have in matching parts. And again, I'm back to, I want to monitor these grants separately, and that requires that the county put in the required matching fund.
I think based on conversations and reports that we received from the auditor on the number of grants that the county has, we had to hire a grant manager to manage these, start creating scenarios and moving money out of the general fund for the basis of reimbursement. I just think that creates additional work, and we're going to have to hire somebody else to do that. My recommendation to council is that we'd leave it as is, operate it as the, much like the VOKA does, allow Matthew and Tammy to spend down out of the grant. That fund number exists, and then transition to the general fund for the balance of the year. In the following year, if Wayne County is a recipient of reimbursable dollars, then that, those dollars be deposited into that specific fund.
Yeah, but once the grant money's spent, it just becomes county general money anyway. Why should we transfer it when it's already coming out there? Yeah, there's not a reason to move it.
Is that a motion, Barry?
I don't know that we need a motion if we're not doing something.
Okay, okay.
I do have another question. Is funds plus the 69,000, is that fully fund those employees for the year?
No. So, we're still? We've already discussed this with the director.
So, we're still going to have to pay?
You're going to have, you either don't pay those employees, or they will be paid from the county general funds.
Not paying employees is not an option.
I understand that. I'm just looking at it, that you can do what you want with that grant, not the grant, with those employees when the time comes.
Kathy, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to make sure that we understood that this reimbursable grant, the money we get for, the money we received in 2023 is for what we spent in 2022. So, we're talking about two different completely years. It's always a year retroactive. The last two years, the state has changed how they do the algorithm and how much comes back to the county. We're fortunate enough that we maxed out, so they have capped the amount that we have received the last two years at $44,827.63. So, we won't get any more than that. I wouldn't anticipate, but that could change every year, and we're kind of at the liberty of the state with those passed down money from FEMA. So, again, I don't care how we do it necessarily, if it's another payroll voucher to pay out of another claim. I guess the only question I have is, is whether that's a percentage taken out, like we already do with the 901 and general fund, that is done throughout the whole year, or whether we pay it down right away and then switch over solely to, you know, general, or just the direction and guidance for our department, how you want us to handle it.
Matthew, it's a reimbursable grant for last year. This year, so it's just paying county general back is what it's doing. Correct. I see no need for another fund. Thank you.
I think that clarifies it even further. We don't need to take any action if we want to just leave everything like it is now.
Mark, you already established the fund for that.
Yes.
Which means that you now have a way to track the grant funds that come in, because they go into that fund.
That's correct.
Instead of the general.
Right.
And then it just reverts to county general where all this, where it's appropriated from in the beginning. Right? No reason to reinvent the wheel?
We are reinventing the wheel.
By having its funds.
Okay, let's move on.
So, you're telling me you don't want to transfer the money into the?
All right. Next, we have an appointment. Is Laura here or not? Steve's going to handle this.
Council has an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is a citizen appointment, and the recommendation is to reappoint Kristen Ward to that for another four-year term. Kristen has been on the BCA for a number of years, great, great member, great attendance, lifelong resident of Wayne County, and so the recommendation to council is to reappoint Kristen Ward to the Board of Zoning Appeals for another four years.
Do I have a motion?
Make the motion, we reappoint Kristen to BCA.
Okay.
Motion by Barry, second by Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. That appointment goes through. All right. Next, we have Mike Sharp from the Highway Department. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Hopefully, this will be the last time you have to do this, but this is a yearly thing that you do for, as a place for the president to sign. It's just a financial commitment letter for IDM, for our underground storage tanks. So, hopefully by next year, there'll be this time we won't have to do this anymore.
Project long-term coming. We just need a motion to allow me to sign this letter of commitment.
Second.
Motion by Max, second by, is that Tony? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want this letter now?
Whenever.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have an ordinance for the Recorders Perpetuation Fund. We talked about that at our last meeting at workshop. We shared the ordinance for that. So, this is ordinance 2023-08, and it just allows for the expiration of all the items that we've talked about in our past meetings out of her perpetuation fund.
For 2024 only. This has to be done every year if there's the ability or desire to do it annually, but can you exceed that amount?
He asked her to take some of their salaries out of that fund, because she has quite a bit of money in there.
And then there's some money for the securities enhancement to the public access area.
So, do we have a motion to?
I'll make the motion, will we?
Second out. Okay, motion by Gary, second by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Thank you.
President?
Yes?
I'll sign my copy and send it down that way. That's good.
Okay. Do you need three copies of resolutions signed, or just one?
I think two. I think the auditor needs one of anything like this.
Okay.
And then I think Bobby can keep an original.
So, we just need two signed copies?
Debbie wants one, she can probably get a copy.
We've got two copies, and we'll send them that way.
Okay. After that, I have a second copy of the other resolution we did earlier, because we only signed one. So, I guess we talked about the EMA grant, which was on our agenda. So, next, we need to vote on the Loop project. Valerie, do you have any other comments you would like to make today? We heard a great presentation at our workshop meeting about the project for the Elder Bearman site.
I just wanted to follow up regarding discussions that I've had with a couple of you regarding the development agreement with the developer. I know that a couple of you wanted to see that, and we just had a meeting on Monday negotiating some of the final terms within that agreement, and upon further discussion with the city's legal counsel, in reality, what you all really want to see is the loan agreement, and that will be the agreement that has the clawbacks in it. That will be important to make sure that our funds and our investment are protected. So, that agreement has not been drafted yet. We want to finalize the development agreement, get that signed, and then the next step will be drafting that loan agreement, because all of the contributions into the project from consolidated edit, the Wayne County Foundation loan, the city's financial contribution, as well as the tip bond, that will all be pooled and held in an escrow fund, and it's going to be considered a forgivable loan. So, that loan document will have all the clawbacks for that forgivable loan. So, when the time comes, I'm happy to provide that to you all for input. However, right now, the development agreement really doesn't have that type of language in it. So, just wanted to share that and clarify. That's why I never followed up and sent that document.
That's understandable. Does anybody have any other questions about what we heard at workshop about this project? If not, I will entertain a motion that we approve the Loop project.
If I could just, a couple of comments, because I've had a lot of people contact me, and I just want to say that I have talked to our mayor-elect, and he assures me this is, this is a good thing for Richmond, Wayne County. So, the people that are concerned about it and think that it won't work, and why are we not taking care of Reedmore first, our mayor-elect also is going to take care of that. So, we have done our due diligence to check, so I want the people watching to know that we've all checked, and a lot of the money in that fund comes from the city of Richmond. So, you know, on that premise, I'm going to vote yes when we get to that. But we did check into those things. So, your voices are heard. We've passed that along, and it's going to be taken care of. Thank you.
Sure. Do you want to turn that into a motion?
I will make the motion that we approve that Loop project.
Second.
Second. Motion by Kathy, second by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have none. That's great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next up, we have commissioners' comments by Mr. Parker and Steve. You can pass them.
I'll go first. You have before you your biweekly sheet, just a couple of points to make to you this morning. The highlighted areas in the numbers are the balances and payments that we have made since you last met. Just a couple of comments on a couple of the projects. The item number 12, the Circuit Court's office security, we're just down to installing a camera on that, and that is supposed to be, that's scheduled for December 18th. And then, the First Bank Expo Hall, HVAC. And I want to clarify, I think there was a question of my comments about the project status, and I made the comment that it would be done in 10 days, and that, I intended that to mean the duct work inside the building would be done in 10 days. The outside work now has to start, but the duct work inside the expo hall is finished. And then, the main service upgrade that project was finished a couple of weekends ago. So, the important number, I think, for council to at least be aware of, there, the line in the lower right-hand corner, highlighted in yellow, 1.7 million, that is your balance in your one-time account after we have taken out everything that we paid as of yesterday. That's not the number that will be reflected if you ran it from the auditor, because those claims hasn't been processed yet, but we've gone ahead and taken it out so that you can see what that number is. The important number, I think, though, I've added that blue line, that's the number that is under contract. So, it would seem to me that that needs to be encumbered.
Be encumbered, for sure.
Now.
That's a reason to be encumbered, honey.
I know the auditor left, but?
He doesn't want to do it, but?
We had this conversation, and he wasn't interested in encumbering at this point. I think this amount needs to be encumbered, but do you want me to encumber that amount?
Definitely.
Okay.
I will do that.
And I would just add that, you know, one of the issues was, under the option that the auditor proposed to you to take care of the 1782 issue, that money would have been deappropriated, and it couldn't have been encumbered. So, it would no longer be available. Now, now that you've chosen the other option of lowering the budget for 2024, that money should be available. So, what we need to know is that you still favor encumbering those funds for these projects that are already under contract.
Would you like us to vote on that?
I think that would be appropriate if you want to do that.
1181.
Yes.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Barry. All in favor?
Aye.
That money will be encumbered for next year.
Thank you.
Any questions on the projects? Okay, thank you.
The HVAC will be totally done soon after the first, or what?
The delivery is expected, the delivery of the units are expected the latter part of January, so it'll be February, probably before St. James.
Let's, while you're up here, let's talk to council a little bit about the $100,000 from First Bank Richmond for the fairgrounds and for the contract with them on the naming rights at the fairgrounds. We, as commissioners, need to discuss this, but one of the options we've been talking about is purchasing some furniture that would be available then for rental for folks who are renting either of those buildings, some nice round banquet tables and nice chairs. So, a lot of people that rent those buildings then rent the tables and chairs from other vendors. We think it makes some sense. Number one, you've seen the tables and chairs that we currently have available at the fairgrounds. They're pretty old and beat up. So, that's one option. Now, we also have, as most of you know, the Chamber Annual Dinner that's coming up in January, mid-January, I think, the 19th of January. So, if we were to try to get furniture in before that date, we would need to act very quickly. Had a brief conversation with Max, and we don't have the $100,000 from the bank in hand the last time I checked a few days ago. Are you interested in us pursuing that and ordering, going ahead and ordering? It probably wouldn't be, it wouldn't come in until, or be payable until after the first of the year. But, we would need to have assurance from council that the money would be available if, for us to go ahead and order it. So?
And our intent is to take whatever amount that purchased amount is. Then our rental fees would be obviously competitive with what people are renting from another source, but we want about a two-year payback to pay back that from our rental fees based upon our history of rentals and the type of rentals that we have and the tables that they use, so that we have about a two-year payback to? so that we have about a two-year payback to replace tables the next time.
So if you're supportive of that, or if you have questions, again, we haven't made a final decision at the commissioner level as to whether we want to go ahead and order that, or whether we want to do something else with that $100,000. But we don't have the money in hand yet, and time is short for us to order that. I'm not even positive that if we ordered it today, that we could get it for, at least for that first chamber function, but I'd like to hear your thoughts.
We've talked, Jeff, I'm a person that's had to rent tables, chairs from other organizations to accommodate us there. I think this is something that we're going to need. If we can acquire, acquire the chamber event, that would be a major rental income, but also to demonstrate. Be ready to continue on. I personally see no reason to not proceed with this. Attempt to get them. If you can't get them, that's one thing, but at least we need to. I would move that we support the effort if the commissioner decides to give us some years there, we would appropriate the funding plan.
That could later be replaced with a payback from that fund at the fairgrounds.
Payback to the general fund.
Correct, correct.
If it's not already here, we may have it by then.
Exactly, exactly. So.
I would move that we support that endeavor.
You've already moved. He already moved. Your second.
About covered.
Yeah, we got it covered. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There on that.
Thank you very much, and we'll keep you posted on that.
Another question for Steve.
I love what we're doing at the fairgrounds.
Things are looking very good.
Yeah, I drive by there at least twice a day, and the activity level has increased substantially. We hired a marketing person earlier this year, and I think it would be nice for council to kind of maybe have a report of what the increase in activity has been and the dollars associated with that.
We'll plan on doing that after the first year when things kind of calm down for you. We had a schedule a couple of times to do it during the workshop, but then, you know, they got kind of overloaded, and so we pushed that back, but we'll do that.
As you talked about the gazebo, I was reviewing my notes, but do you want to give an update on where we're at with that?
As you know, we had another donation from the Wayne County Farm Bureau of a gazebo. It's about, it's a 16 by 32-foot gazebo. It's nice, it's made out of the composite material. Highway Department is making the mat or the placement of it for this weekend, and hopefully it'll be delivered next week and be in place. So it's a very pretty, you can even get married in it if you want to. That'll be another rental opportunity.
Not if you're already married.
Yeah, not if you're already married.
Any other questions for Steve? Let's wait until he sits down again. Now, who has a question for Steve? I've got a few things that I wanted to talk to you about, and what it lists on the agenda is to talk about the ARPA fund. As you know, we're in full swing here with, between the HELP program and the balance of the ARPA funds that we have available. So I've tried to put together a report. Remember that no money has been appropriated. There is no specific budget that you approved for ARPA for 2024. Let me remind you of the timeline for expenditure of ARPA funds. ARPA funds must all be committed by the end of 2024. So we've got just, you know, 13 months to get everything committed. And by commitment, they mean under contract essentially. And if then it is a construction project, then we have two years to the end of 2026 to complete that construction project. If it is a commitment for programming, it could be put in the budget for 2025, but 2025 would be the end of any programming expenses. So we need to continue to move forward with this. The first step would be to appropriate money for 2024, so we know we have that money available to enter into contracts to make these projects happen. So if you'll take that form that I passed out to you on the front, it's listed ARPA Fund 08952, the draft of the 2024 budget. So the first box at the top is kind of a review of what we've done up to this point, and shows that we have uncommitted ARPA funds for 2024 of $4,300,000. And then we break down what we have committed. So Personnel Services, remember Beth Fields is the community coordinator, and her total compensation and fringes would be $84,000 for 2024. Then the balance of what we committed to in 2023, so we have some funding committed for Baker Tilly to be our consultant with respect to ARPA programming and reporting. We have the Contractual Professional, which is in essence the contract with, to do the scanning, digitization program for the clerk's office. We had also spent or allocated some money for road equipment and sheriff's vehicles. Those are going to be spent and would not carry through to 2024 unless you want to put those line items back in. If you've got something in the budget, for example, I think the Fleet Committee has talked about two additional sheriff's cars for 2024. Those are eligible expenses, and so that could be reinserted for 2024. The same with other road equipment. And remember again, we've got money in two different pots essentially. $10 million of lost revenue and the balance, about $2.8 million, that has to follow the original treasury rules. And we've got some notes on the back about that. Then at the bottom of the first page are the HELP project commitments that we've already approved, and that comes to $5,893,253. If you flip this over to the back, the only additional ARPA commitment that project that we've committed to is the Highway Fuel Project. That's at $500,000, so both commissioners and council have approved that. The next block, uncommitted possible ARPA investments for 2024. I probably should have just left that number at $4,300,000, but I went ahead and enumerated some of the projects that Jeff thought we had already discussed and at least had some favorable comments about. We've talked for a year or two now about hardscape and landscaping in our complex here downtown. A big chunk of that would include reworking the entrance to the courthouse, which has some ADA issues that need to be addressed. We also have some sidewalk issues, and some of the parking on Fourth Street is less than adequate. It needs to be elongated, and the only way to do that would be to take out some of the sidewalk to make the parking spaces longer in the area that's designated for emergency vehicles on the east side of Fourth Street there. So that's listed at $500,000. New cabling, we've talked about, and Craig Easton has presented to us about two cables to each workstation in the complex, which would allow them to separate data and voice, so that we have essentially double the bandwidth available to us, and that we would be ready to move to a new phone system when we decide to take that step. Fairgrounds roofs, Coolman and the horse barn are what's contemplated there at $300,000. Then we've talked for a while about the security upgrades that might include doing away with a lot of the keys and using proxy cards for employees. And then, you know, when an employee leaves, that proxy card can be immediately deactivated, or it's easy to add a new one to that mix. So that is what we've already discussed. There are several million dollars of other things that have been proposed by individuals that we haven't decided on at this point. So essentially there, the total uncommitted ARPA is $4,398,200. That, if you go on to the next block of notes, it simply tells you that there's an estimated balance at the end of the year of $11,439,393. Much of that has been committed through HELP. And then finally, the breakdown of the total ARPA receipts, again, $12,797,195. We've classified that. We took advantage of the lost revenue opportunity. So $10 million is in that lost revenue category, which means that we can spend that on anything that is legal for a local government to do. It has essentially no strings attached. The restricted money is everything in excess of that $10 million, or in our case, $2,797,195. If you look below that, it lists the things that we have already done or have already committed to that can be, that does fall under that category of restricted funding. So we already have $3,210,155, or more than enough to account for the restricted monies that we have to spend under those treasury guidelines. So everything else then that we spend going forward can be classified as lost revenue and have that rule applied to it. So I share this with you so you have an update on where we're at with ARPA, but also to say we have $0 appropriated for next year. This would be one that I would recommend to you, that we want to do an appropriation on your meeting at January 3rd. And so we need to, if we're going to do that, we need to advertise by the 15th of December. This is your only meeting between now and the 15th of December, the workshop until the 20th. So what I would like for you to consider with this and a couple others that I'll talk about in a minute, is to authorize us to go ahead and advertise, and then to appoint a member of council with the authority to establish the dollar amount that you want to have advertised. So we've got another week or so that we can work through those issues on how much we want to advertise. And remember that what we advertise then becomes the maximum that you could appropriate in January. You could scale it back, you could appropriate less if you choose to, and you can do that at that meeting where you do the final appropriation. But that would be my recommendation for the ARPA fund. In addition to the ARPA fund, there has been no budget approved and finalized for the Consolidated Edit Fund, which includes the operating budget for the EDC. The same would be true with the Tourism Bureau, and that is all their operating budget. And then a little different scenario where in the Health Fund for the Public Health Department, the 1782 approved $0. Remember, several years ago, we removed the levy, so there is no revenue stream that's committed to the public health from our tax dollars. And so they're reliant on having additional dollars that support them through you all. We've got, I know, money allocated, $500,000 in the 2024 budget. But the 2022 allocation that was anticipated didn't actually get to the Health Department until 2023. And remember how DLGF views this. Anything that is budgeted, that is appropriated, they expect you will spend it. And so that's why the allocation that they're allowing for 2024 is zero. So that would be one that I would recommend you go ahead and approve advertising.
Just for the additional amount they need, how are we going to know that?
I think we can find that. We know what their budget request was, and I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $800,000.
And we've got $500 in our budget.
There's $500,000 in your budget that can be moved to them. The last report I looked at showed a balance in that fund of between $150,000 and $200,000, as I recall. So we can work with that. Most of that will probably be spent.
Yeah.
So it will need to be an additional appropriation of, in the neighborhood of $300,000, but I don't have a refined number, exact number of it. Correct. So instead of appropriating $800,000, it would be $300,000.
So, but my question leads to, then there really should be no rush to appropriate that additional amount.
It doesn't have to be, because they'll have money available. But my opinion, and we can consult with Ron, even though you transfer money into the fund, it still has to be appropriated. So just because it's appropriated in your budget, when it goes into the Health Fund, it's not appropriated as, at least as far as I know.
Well, I think we're trying to sort of take our best to do everything with the optimum amount of transparency and procedure, because we don't know what the audit's going to look like after we spend the money. So I think when there's a doubt, unless it's certain, some care of the burdensome liability agency or office, we're a hand aside of extra procedural caution.
So I, my opinion, even though you're going to transfer that money over to them, we ought to appropriate the whole amount for their budget, and then it's just a matter of where it comes from.
It is easier to do it while we're advertising the rest of it.
And remember that essentially, they'll be close to zero, somewhere probably between $0 and $100,000 in the fund. So you'll have to move more than the $500,000 at some point. Doesn't have to be on day one, but we'll need to do an additional appropriation. So if we set it at whatever their budget was, let's say, for example, it's $800,000, then you'll still need to appropriate that, at least a piece of that, so that it's available to them. So again, my request would be that you would approve advertising at least those four budgets. And if you give us a little grace period, we can work together, Beth and I can work on making sure that there's not another fund that we didn't overlook. And then we'll establish the numbers, which again, would be the high number that we advertise. And then you all will know what that is, and you'll be able to lower that before you actually appropriate the dollars in January to whatever number you want it to be.
I would move that we authorize Beth to advertise those four funds when we get a little better number, advertise it for December 15th, and then we will take official action. action as to the amount, the exact amount at our first meeting in January.
Motion by Tony, second by Gary, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you for that and we'll keep you, we'll keep you informed.
We'll work with Bobby on the advertising.
Absolutely.
The numbers and things that we need.
I do have a quick question for Jeff. When you were talking about the uncommitted possible ARPA items here, is a new phone system for the county in there anywhere?
It is not because remember Craig Eason's recommendation is that we not purchase a phone system, but that we lease the phones. Leasing incorporates the idea of, of replacements. You know, if, if a phone breaks, we don't have to buy another one, we just send that one back to them and they send us a new one. So it's got a, a lot of advantages. It does, as I recall, about double the costs, the monthly cost from thirty thousand-ish to seventy thousand-ish. And that's if, once we've done the entire county, so about four hundred workstations where, maybe it was three fifty because everybody doesn't have their own dedicated phone. At any rate, that's why it's not in ARPA that it would, it would be a recurring expense and we've been talking about one-time kind of capital improvements and capital equipment purchases with ARPA.
I have several appointments to ask off and on and so I just thought I'd get the official answer.
This is the first step is, is having the cabling done.
Yeah, definitely. There's so many advantages to leasing. I mean, right now we're stuck with a dinosaur, they can't even get parts for.
Exactly.
So.
And, and Craig's idea is that then we could ease into the new phone system so we could pick a department or two and, and let them be the guinea pigs, have the new system, make sure all the bugs are worked out before we take it to, to all the other departments.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
And it will increase his budget for the next year. I mean, I'm sure for twenty-five, but we'll just have that in mind that we didn't do a one-time expense, but.
Exactly. Just a, a couple of other things. First, let me add my congratulations to Beth for your award. That was a, a really nice event last night.
You've done a lot to me that everyone showed up.
And, you know, deservedly so and you really deserve that award. You've done a lot and we appreciate that. And I would say thanks to, to Nathan who allowed me to, to say a few words at the event, to share with the people in Western Wayne about, about the HELP program, how beneficial it has been for Western Wayne, where they will receive something on the order of, of a million and a half dollars from outside sources to, to do some projects that, that they all agreed as a community that they wanted to do. The, the four communities in Western Wayne, Dublin, Cambridge, East Germantown and Milton are all participants in HELP and, and they're all receiving additional funding that will support improvements to those communities. The other thing that in my opinion is critical and Nathan and I have talked about last night is the, the developing lines of communication between Western Wayne and, and the rest of, of folks in Wayne County. Think everybody who's participating in HELP identifies that as one of the real positives of opening lines of communication and working together on things that are going to benefit us all. I would express my kudos to you for approving the Albert Beerman Project. I think there's so many things right now that are coming together. It's the fruition of really three, four, five years of, of, of work by a lot of people and there will be resources coming to Wayne County that we have not had in the past, starting with the ARPA dollars. We need to invest them appropriately and I think we're doing that. You know, I, I talked to Barry earlier this morning about the Communications, Emergency Communications Project. That's something that's been a lingering problem for us for thirty years and, and it's something that we actually have an opportunity to address appropriately and after all these years, that's a really good thing. There are a lot of, of programs that are, in the next couple of years are going to tremendously benefit Wayne County and I think we're, we're on the verge of taking a huge leap forward for the county. So my congratulations to all of you and thank you for your support as we've gone down this path.
I agree you've worked hard on that. A lot of extra on the face.
It's been worth it. One final thing, next Wednesday, we have our, we're returning to our Annual Holiday Dinner, Lunch I probably should call it. So we are going to host that here in the building for county employees and we cordially invite council to participate. I want to say it's eleven to one, Steve, do you have that? Is that right? Okay. So we ask you all to participate and hope to, hope to see you there.
That's the fourteenth.
It's the thirteenth, I believe.
The thirteenth, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Did I miss that, Jeff?
I believe it's eleven to one, Kathy.
Thank you.
We'll, we're going to be sending out a reminder to all staff so you'll be included in that with a few more details, but it's been a while since we've been able to host something like that and commissioners are, are happy to do that, so hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have any reports from their committees today? Done like that. We have a visitor today, my friend Karma Parish from the Cambridge City area is interested in county government and she's here just, you know, taking it all in. She may go out the door, run out the door and never come back after. No, it's good to have her and, you know, a lot of these days she may run through my seat, so.
Mm.
Yeah. It's good to have you, good to have Mayor Elect here with us today. Anyone have anything else? We will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will.
Second. On a second, all in favor?
Aye.